Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our commission meeting. We're ready to start. Will you take the roll call, city clerk first, please?
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good is not here at the moment. Vice Mayor Schwartz?
I'm here.
Mayor Ordus?
Here.
City manager Dodge?
Here.
City attorney Goring?
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Any reason why we don't have the names on the screen, just seats? Any reason for that? Okay. Pleasure allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, we're gonna give a presentation now to one of the better and best car companies that are in Broward County and all over. So, Mr. Ryan, would you come forward, please? Okay, ladies and gentlemen watching, ladies and gentlemen here, it's a great, great pleasure again to recognize Rick Case for what they do for our great city and for the people of Broward County and all over. So, we want to say Rick Case Bikes for Kids Day. And you've been doing it for 40 years. Whereas 40 years ago, the Bikes for Kids program was started by Rita and Rick Case in conjunction with the local Boys and Girls Club to distribute new and pre-owned bicycles during the holiday season to those children whose holiday may be less than bright. And whereas this program teaches their kids a valuable lesson about the joys of giving as well as providing a much appreciated gift for children who might otherwise not hope to receive such a present. And whereas throughout the program's history, more than 125,000 bikes have been donated in Cleveland, Atlanta, and South Florida. And whereas this contribution is significant in terms of effort and spirit by all who participate in this worthwhile project. And whereas it is hoped that thousands more bicycles will be received and given to deserving children again this year. And whereas the city of Pembroke Pines sends congratulations and celebrates the 40th anniversary of the Bikes for Kids program. Now therefore, I Frank Sehorts as mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines to hereby proclaim November 16, 2022, as Rick Case Bike for Kids Day in the city of Pembroke Pines and commend these hard-working young people and the Case family for their unselfish dedication to this program and encourage our residents to support this outstanding project in every way possible. Congratulations. Thank you. I don't have much to say other than if you know anybody that has a bike they no longer need, bring it to us so we can get it to a kid for the holidays, please. Beautiful. Thank you all. Thank you. Congratulations again. How we doing? 40 years.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes.
Before we get started, I just wanted to wish Sophie Bach a happy 98th birthday. Isn't that something? She is the greatest example of Century Village of aging with elegance and grace, and she stays busy, and she's still beautiful and sharp as a tack, and I just want to wish her a happy birthday. I know we all join in in wishing her a very, very happy birthday.
Thank you, Commissioner Castillo. Sophie, you are the best. Happy birthday. All right, before we get started, I just wanted to say what a great job that Mr. Dodge did and Jonathan at the school board getting us much, much, much-needed money from the state of Florida for our charter school operation. It wasn't easy. It was lengthy, and Mr. Dodge, you're to be commended. Jonathan, thank you. And I called Commissioner, School Board member Tynan and thanked him personally. If we could all do that, I'm sure he would appreciate it. Mr. Dodge, congratulations. All right, announcement of items to be pulled from the agenda.
One C, Mayor. Item one C.
Okay, items at the request of the public.
Mayor, there is an item at the request of the public from Ms. Toby Millman.
Okay, no items.
No, oh. Okay, there are announcements of items to be pulled from the agenda administratively. There are no items pulled from the agenda.
Commissioner Audit Report.
Items at the request of the public, there is an item at the request of the public, and that item is from Toby Millman, who has submitted a request to speak to the commission. Ms. Toby Millman?
Ms. Toby, come on up. You have three minutes.
Please come forward.
All right, now you have a minute. Good evening, young lady. How are you?
It's a button you have to press.
Hit the speak button, please, to your right. Down. You've been here 100 times. 100. We'll get help for you.
She's gonna talk about something really important, so pay attention.
Uh-oh, there we go.
Okay.
All right, now you have one minute. You have one minute.
Okay. My name is Toby Millman. I live in Pembroke Pines, original homeowner. I know you guys a long time. I'm a volunteer for Vitas Hostess. I'm working on my 30th year. Done it all, seen it all. We had a support group at Southwest Senior Center for many years, and these people, it was an hour, two times a month. If you wanted to cry, we cried. If you wanted to laugh, we laughed. We all lost somebody. All of a sudden, after so many years, we're out. I can't understand it. Somebody said it was, Vitas doesn't want to sign something, and the city doesn't want to change the wording, and I got news for you. This thing that we were doing, the support group, is needed. I need it. I've lost a husband and a son, and just to be with these people, there's maybe 10, 12 people. They get together, we talk about everything from sex to you name it, and we just let the flow. And if anything can be done, it would be so much appreciated. I don't...
I'm sorry, could you push that button again, please? Yeah. Okay, you're done.
Is that it?
Yes.
Am I finished?
Nope, go ahead.
Anyhow, again, if anything can be done, if it doesn't have to involve Vitas, don't involve Vitas. Just let us have our gathering so we can cry, we can laugh, and we can be together because it's a hardship, and I know you've all experienced it. God bless you. Have a happy Thanksgiving, a safe holiday, a healthy, healthy, healthy New Year. I'm going home, go to bed. Bye.
Thank you, Toby. Always, always a pleasure.
All right, Mayor.
Yes.
Before she goes, well, what can we do to get back to her? And it seems to me that if 12 seniors want to get together at a table at the senior center, we should let them get together at the table at the senior center.
Mr. Mayor, I'll check this out tomorrow.
And do you have Toby's phone number, Charlie?
I have her number.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Dodge, thank you. All right, we have a Commissioner Audit Report?
No report, ma'am.
Appeals of the Board of Adjustment Decisions?
None, ma'am.
Announcement of board and committee appointments?
No announcements.
All right, we're on our consent agenda. We have first one C by Vice Mayor Sipel. We have first, one C, by Vice Mayor Syple. Vice Mayor, um, not that long night. Okay, and what is your pleasure?
Eleven, Mayor.
Eleven, Mr. Syple. Any others? All right, I need a motion for one A, B, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10.
Double.
Move by Commissioner Castillo, second by Commissioner Syple. Discussion. Hearing now all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Puzzled, aye to him. All right, Vice Mayor, item one C. Sorry? Item one C.
If, if I can just have the screen roll down so I could read the electronic copy.
Mayor?
Mr. Vice Mayor, if you will.
You gotta speak in your line.
Mr. Mayor, if you will, acknowledging the presence of Commissioner Good for the record, please.
Our thousand presence of Mr. Good for the record.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, yes, for the record, the arrival of Commissioner Good at 6:42 PM. Thank you.
I just did that. Anybody else want to tell me?
It's an echo.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, City Attorney, can you read the item to the record? I don't have it up.
I can, item number.
I can't hear that mic.
No problem, I'll lean in. I want to have the City Attorney read the item into the record, I don't have it on my screen.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, item number, on the consent agenda, item one, one C, it's a motion to approve the department recommendations for the following items listed on the contract database report, and item one C reads as follows. The transportation authority, bus transportation services, school slash community services renewal. Item D is not being renewed, therefore no commission action is required as it is presented for notification purposes only. Pursuant to section 35.29 subsection F of the city's procurement code, and D, CALCI Soccer LLC Soccer Uniforms. That's the next item over. That was item C, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Vice Mayor, for the record.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, City Attorney. I just need to get a second so I could.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Syple. I had a comment, a couple comments and a question for the city manager regarding the item. My recollection, Commissioner Good, was we had, we had an RFP back in 2018 regarding transportation, and as a result of that RFP, the vendor in which we're now, that's under consideration for extension, never actually bid on it. And my recollection, if I'm not mistaken, city manager, the original contract goes back 20, 21 years, I guess. Commissioner Good, your kids started the charter school system in what year? But we needed, yeah, we needed buses back then, right? So, it's my understanding that it was a sole source procurement process because the city had never done something like that before, and it was rather large. So, in the backup, there's, administration alludes to the fact if we were to do this in-house, and what that cost would be. But what the administration hasn't done is look at potential savings to the city by putting it back out. The item is, I think that as far as renewal is premature as far as timing goes, we had, this is a five-year contract, we approved it in, I think, second quarter, maybe the beginning of third quarter of 2018. So, I see this coming to us just a little bit earlier than usual. We usually get big contracts from other vendors well inside 90 days, and then we don't have a choice. But, in this case, I think since we are paying for all costs, maintenance costs, fuel costs, some capital purchase costs, this is a different time, and given how tight our purse strings need to be going forward, I think it's worth exploring to see what's out there. We have, I don't want to dive into another item on the agenda tonight, but we certainly want to see what, what the market interest is for other types of things that the city may need. So, I would like to listen in to what my colleagues want to do with this item. I think a renewal at this point, again, is premature. I'd like to see what the market can bear and see where we're at, because we don't, we don't have really any idea what's out there, other than, or currently under contract with the vendor who we didn't actually bid. So, that's all I got on that, and, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to have at least Commissioner Good and everyone else weigh in on it.
Mayor? Let me just say one word first. Item A was a feasibility review of cost analysis of outsourcing versus the in-house labor conducted for the service, and it says yes. If you ask what was the total cost, total savings of in, outhouse, in-house labor for the service, it was $3.1 million compared to in-house. So, there was some movement made. Commissioner Castillo, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I saw that as well. I was, so this is before, pursuant to section 35.29F, in which the city manager, his designee, shall notify the commission in writing at least three months in advance of the expiration renewal or automatic renewal or extension date of any contract or agreement, and a vendor performance card for the contractor agreement to the city commission. And the department is recommending that this be renewed. Mr. Dodge, are you available to answer questions, or is there a staff member that I can ask questions of?
Aye, answer questions.
Okay, so when is this renewal due?
It's due, it expires in January 23.
June of 2023.
Let me explain.
Is it June or January?
January, I'm sorry. And that's in the middle of a year, that doesn't make a lot of sense when you're running school buses, okay? You don't change that operation at that time, but that's how it had worked from year to year. Secondly, the reason we're giving it to you at this point, our recommendation is to renew it, however, if it's the desire of the commission to go back out for bid, we're gonna need a significant amount of time to get the bid specifications prepared, advertise it, review it, and bring it back to you, because you would want to do something at the beginning of the school year. Now, could we wait a little bit longer? Yes, but we think it's in the best interest right now, so we know what's going on, because it's not only the school transportation, it's also our senior service transportation, and it's also our shuttle bus service.
So, so, what is the, what is the total contract amount for this, for this service?
I think Mark has that number, Jonathan, just please come up here.
Good evening, Mark Gomes, Procurement Director. The estimated annual cost of the contract is $3.6 million.
3.6 million. And you all conducted a cost benefit analysis to take this in-house?
Yes.
And what, what was the differential?
I believe it's 3.1 million.
So, it would cost us $3.1 million more to bring it in-house?
Correct.
Okay.
Pulling the vote, Mayor?
All right, Vice Mayor.
I stipulated that the in-house is already noted, but what's not noted in the backup is what the potential market would bear, and since we had spent nearly six months on this item in putting it out to bid, I don't see any reason to change any of the language that was proposed back in 2018 to put it back on the street. Three, if I misspoke with, with respect to the contract time, I apologize, but what's even worse is the fact that now the administration is bringing this to us inside of 90 days.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, Commissioner Syple?
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Castillo?
Can I continue with my?
Commissioner Castillo?
Thank you very much.
So, so, it will cost another three point, how much?
3.1.
3.1 if we were to bring it in-house. Now, the renewal that you're, you're asking for is currently part of the contract, or is this a new renewal?
The renewal is part of the contract, it's allowable.
It's allowable under the contract?
Yes.
So, under the contract, this is in the time for RFP?
Correct.
Okay, and have you been doing any market analysis of other firms that are out there and what, comparing what we might shop for, what we might get? Is there a sense, Mr. Dodge, that, that this is a good value at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Commissioner, yes, we do, and let me explain why.
Right.
The last time we went for bid, and yes, we do have bid specifications already written, but I believe the way they were written at that time, we advertised that the company would provide buses, would pay for all those costs, and if you remember, the bid that came in was significantly higher than what we were already paying. So, that's why we recommended to keep the same process that we currently have, which is basically we pay the actual cost, we modify, we monitor the salaries, we monitor everything on purchasing many parts for the buses, which we own, and we pay for all that, including the gas. If we privatized it, as you know, we would have the more expensive benefit packages plus insurance costs, liability costs, that now is borne by the vendor who obtains their own insurance. So, if it's the desire of the commission to go out and, we would want to redraft those specifications and bring it back to you and explain why.
Okay, and have you had any, have you had any serious complaints or performance issues with this vendor at all?
As far as I'm concerned, for the number of years where we've had it, our school buses have always been safe. I'm not aware of any issues where children have been left on buses, children have not been picked up or brought home, the same way with our senior services. Have them been occasionally an accident? Yes. I believe for the most part, the accidents that occur were caused by others. We have a pretty good safety record in our shuttle buses that run every day. I'm not aware of any major concerns of safety that we've had for anyone riding those buses. So, that is another reason why we brought it so early, because if this question came up again, and we didn't know if it would, we want to have that amount of time to put together specifications that everyone is clear on, so they can understand it, because the last time that was questioned.
Appreciate that. The, the, the statement was made that this was essentially a sole source contract, was this?
No.
Was this a sole source contract?
No, it wasn't. When we originally started, it was a bid contract. I believe the name of the company was what, you might remember, Aner?
Redden, Redden.
Leylaw? Yeah.
Right. A point of clarification?
Go ahead.
City Manager, yes, the vendor that we currently have took over, it was assumed contract, am I right? I mean, it was like 21 years ago, so none of us were here, I don't think, except for maybe the mayor. It was an assumed contract, was it not?
It was, I believe, it was a transition.
Transition.
Yeah, it was a transition.
Yeah, so, again, we.
I'm not debating with you, Commissioner, if that's what you would like to do, we certainly would explore it. I don't know what the outcome would be, but I certainly wouldn't want to end up in the situation that we did last time with lobbyists who, in my opinion, misrepresented what was within the bid, misrepresented on how we operated our system, made statements such as, there's no way we could do it this cheaply, and their bid was higher. But I believe that that's something you'd like to check for the market. We want to rewrite those specifications, so they're very clear for anyone who wishes to bid on it.
All right, for discussion.
Yes, Mayor.
Commissioner Syple?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions, and I hope, Mr. Gomes, you can help me understand this a little bit better. So, we have this contract that we've had for, for a while. Now, in the, in the agenda book, it says that, you know, it was, it was for a five-year period, and that it would be expiring on June 30th of 2023.
That's correct.
Okay.
I misspoke, I'm sorry.
Right, okay. So, I remember very well the discussion from about four years ago when we were talking about, about this, and there were a lot of good points that were brought up, you know, at the time. So, the value, what we were just told tonight, that the value of this contract is $3.6 million a year for the entire contract, all three portions of that contract. It's my understanding that everything that, that city manager mentioned as far as the equipment, the maintenance, the gas, I mean, the employees that drive, that, that we get invoices, the city gets invoices for that, and the city pays all of that. Is that, is that?
That's correct.
Yes. Okay. So, so, we, we rely on these invoices coming in for everything that it takes to make this run. We buy the equipment, we own the equipment, we do that. The part that, that, that kind of gets to me a little bit is not so much that, because I understand that, and I have faith that our audit checks all those invoices and that we're, that we're good on that, on that kind of stuff, is this contract is actually with not a person, but it's with a corporation. And this person, and I have nothing at all against this person, I, you know, seems to be a nice enough gentleman. But what I don't see is from, for almost 22 years, that, that we have ever even put out a contract to see if there was another person or corporation that would like to come in and, and take that, that position.
Point of clarification.
I believe we did, Commissioner Syple.
That's correct.
And it used to be, it was a contentious.
But, hold on a second, Mayor, to be clear about that, four years ago, when we brought that up, it was not just to have someone come in and, and take over the position of the head of it to run, you know, to run everything. It was also that it would be their equipment, not our equipment. If you remember correctly, it was their equipment, and that was where all, so much of that cost came in, was for them to provide the buses and the, all of that stuff, correct?
Mr. Dodge, can you clarify?
Yeah, that was the correct, and that was the rationale in the evaluation of it, to have someone else come in and buy 55 school buses.
Right, right.
Eight or 10 vans for shuttle bus, as well as senior, and then we, they would do their estimate as to what replacement cost would be, the amortization of that. So, it escalated significantly.
Right.
So, it was something that would have been an expense to the charter school of a couple extra million dollars that we also did not have.
Thank you.
I don't feel interested.
Okay, sorry.
And the, and the other issue that I mentioned was, we have a history of performance, of safety. I would be very, very concerned if we make a transition, which, there may not be anything wrong with it, but I would hate for an operation that has been so successful, operating so well, that we would give it to someone else that may be, it could come in maybe cheaper, I'm not sure, but would it provide us with the same service. So, once again, the reason we have it before you, we know it's gonna take time, it's up by June 30th, not January.
Thank you.
So, because it's up in June, we need to have somebody in place in July that that transition can take place.
Right.
For setting up schedules, bus routes, and everything else.
Okay, so let, thank you, Mr. Dodge. So, let me make clear what my concern is again. I'm not asking, and I would not be asking, that we look at bringing in someone, changing this whole contract around and bringing someone in who would then bring in their own equipment and all that. We've got too much money tied up in all of this equipment. We've got too much money tied up in all of this equipment. I think that would be, at this point, would be a bad move for us. What I'm saying is the fact that, that who we, who we rely upon to run this entire operation, this corporation, has never, ever seen the light of day of filling out, uh, an application, a bid, or, or responding to anything. And I'm just saying that I would like to see something that, that would go out, where in fact, the contract itself, how it's set up with the, the, that the city owns, and the city still envoys, invoices and pays and, and all that. I'm not looking necessarily to change that, because the conversations I've had, if we ever went in that direction, that would have to be something that would have to take place over a number of years, just because of the capital investments and stuff that we have, uh, e- equipment and everything else. What I'm saying is that I would like to see, for, for transparency, for everything else that we talk about in the city, that I would like to see this, um, be bid on who we award the contract to, as the contract pretty much stays as, as, as it is now.
Point of clarification?
But...
I, Commissioner Cyple, Commissioner Castillo?
Thank you.
I, I want to, I want to go over this, because this is a very important point that's being, that's being raised. I, I specifically asked, is this renewal, which is all that's in front of us right now, is this renewal authorized under the contract that this city commission approved? And the answer is?
Yes.
Are there additional renewals under that contract that this city commission approved?
That can approve, yes.
Yes, so, we made the decision before, be- before this item was placed on the agenda, we made the decision to offer this vendor competitively, correct?
We went out to a bid process, and the city commission...
So, there was a bid process, and they, and they bid?
Point of order?
No, they never bid.
I'm asking, I'm asking?
Point of order, Mayor.
Excuse me, I, I, I'd like to get an answer to my question.
Guy, running a meeting, answer the question, please.
They did not submit a bid to that response.
Okay, so, how, how is it that we're in business with that? Explain that, again.
We went out to bid for this project, um, the city, the responses that came in were a lot more than the current contract with the city.
Right.
Uh, administration brought forward an item for the city commission to consider, uh, moving forward in the best interest with negotiating with the current contractor.
Right.
Uh, and the city commission approved that, uh...
Uh-huh, now I gue- now, now I'm remembering. So, for the best interest of the city, we voted to not only hire this company, but to offer them extensions.
Correct.
And this is simply one of the extensions that we previously authorized. There are actually, there's actually an additional one.
Correct.
And then, we have, we're forced to go out to bid.
Correct.
Okay. But you're not, but you're not forced to recommend these extensions, you're recommending these extensions based on business judgment.
Correct, administration's recommending the renewal of this contract.
So, so, so if we go, if, if we, if we task you, which I'm not afraid of doing, if we task you with, with going out, uh, for another RFP, there has to be a business judgment that, more than a hunch, that there's a vendor out there who can outperform this one in every, in every single way. Not just, not just on price, not just on, uh, on the logistics of it, but also on the safety to our students, which we, and, and our seniors, which we have not had a problem with.
Okay, there's point of clarification, we'll take it.
Okay, Mayor.
Mr. Cyple?
Could I continue? Thank you. So, originally, um, twenty-some-odd years ago, this, this was never responded to as a bid by the current vendor, correct?
Um, that's, uh, I'd have to look back at the research on how this was originally awarded. Um, that previous contract was before my time.
Okay, we've asked that question before, and the answer was, no, they have never, ever bid on, uh, this contract. Okay, it was just awarded to them. So, my problem, again, is not in, in the contract itself, in, in the fact that how it, how it, how it works, that city owns, city pays, city pays for e- every single item that makes this run. And safety certainly is always a concern, whether it's for our seniors, or whether it's for our, anybody riding our blue golds, greens, um, a- a- and our school buses. The part that, that I have concern about is we don't know what we don't know in the portion of this contract on who we have running this contract. And they have yet to ever come before us, and in fact, four years ago, they stood here and said they refused to submit, uh, to an RFP. I find that to be, um, not good.
What's the gentleman's?
Mr., Mr. Mayor?
What's the gentleman's name that runs the?
Richard Becerra?
Richard, I couldn't remember him, three years.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I may respond.
Absolutely.
It's not that they refused, it was the fact that the requirements of the bid would have required that company to acquire all the assets of buses, and it was in a different format than what the original award to them was, as you had defined it. That's why he was unable to bid, because he didn't have those resources. I don't know, eh, I'm sure there's some large companies that may have those resources, and there's one that did bid, but the cost for that was extraordinarily more than what we were currently paying.
Mr. Dodge, Mr. Dodge, please, with, what, what was put out four years ago was, was an, a con- was a, was a bid where a company would come in and supply all of the equipment, all of the stuff. That was, I have to tell you, that was, that was a really bad, or a, a bad idea. That was a really bad idea, and no one could see their way into, into, um, supporting that, just because of the, the financial end of it. It, it just didn't make, it didn't make sense. We've got, we've got, I don't even know how many dollars we have tied up, you know, in equipment, and, and it would, it would not have made sense to, to, to do that at that time. And, and I recall very clearly that we said, "This is not a great RFP that went out", because it really wasn't, it, it really wasn't what should have been. We should have been asking, what I'm asking now, which is keeping the, the, the meat of this contract as it is, with the city owning and the city, the city pays for every single thing that makes this run, every single thing. What I'm, what I'm saying is that the, the part of it that makes sense to me is that the corporation, and the person, the corporation, that we award this contract to as the overseer, the ru- you know, runner of this contract, whatever you want to call it, after twenty-one years, should have to fill out an RFP a- and, and show their qualifications. And you know what? If some, if, if they are, if they fill it out, and they are, you know, perfect on everything, well, then we have an opportunity to award it. But we don't know what we don't know. If we don't ask for anyone else to even come in for that portion of, of it, the o- the person in charge that we give this authority to, we don't, we don't know. We don't know. And so, I, I just think that too many times, we sit up here and we say, transparency is important, putting things out is important, we, we need to find out, are we getting the best deal for, for, uh, you know, for what we're spending our money on? And we don't know if we don't ask. So, I'm saying that my, that my questions, and, and what I understand, and I've been talking about this for quite some time now, is that it does not make sense for us in the, in the financial position that we're in, with all of the money we have invested in equipment and tools a- a- and everything else that goes along, because we pay for all of that. That doesn't make sense to me to just automatically try to flip that, because I can see a huge cost, uh, increase in that. I'm not asking for anything like that. I'm saying, I would like to see the portion of who we award the contract to, as the vendor to run this contract, with the same provisions that we have in it now, should actually go out, uh, should actually go out for bids. We need to find out what we don't know, we, and that's the only way we can. So, that's how I would like to see this, um, move forward. Thank you.
Was there, let me just say, was there any interest in going out to bid by any contractor while you were going through this process?
Uh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
We haven't been, we haven't been out yet, Mayor, for the process.
And no one had, well, it's in the book, so, somebody must have seen it.
No, no, well, they wouldn't until we either renewed it, or if we went back out for bid.
All right, let me just say that this company, for a long time, I'm just going to say it's my opinion, been a very generous company, very generous, to the city, and whatever you needed for, uh, you know, golf tournament, whatever, they're very generous. And if you needed buses for a location for a private, you know, not for private, but for a, getting around for our seniors to the city center, they accommodated it. So, I happen to like this particular vendor. Commissioner, uh, Good?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, um, just, just so you know, I'm, I don't have any, any good or bad vibe with the, with the current vendor. The, uh, the current vendor certainly seems to be doing a very good job at what they're doing right now. I think what's at question is just the process. So, uh, first, I'd like to say, really, um, you know, thanks again for, you know, this item, uh, the details that were put into this item, uh, very transparent, i- in my opinion. Um, and so, just a few things, uh, you know, that I picked up from, you know, from, from the backup. You know, yeah, this thing went out, yeah, back in, what, two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen? Yep, we had responses that, of people who were interested. Yep, it got, um, rejected twice, because the expense of hiring, uh, one of the bidders was more expensive than the way that we're doing it today. And yep, the city commission did, at that time, agree to a contract, uh, in the best interest of the city, bypassing, uh, the procurement process, so, um, understandably so. So, um, and, and, um, you know, Commissioner Castillo brings up a point about, you know, additional, um, uh, extensions to the contract, things like that, and I don't think that's a bad thing. I, I don't, I don't know that that's the issue here, um, and I think it's actually good to have in the event that, um, should we go out to bid, which I will support going out to bid again. But if it doesn't work again, and we get it all done, as the city manager says, in enough time before the termination of the contract, then I think we're in a position to go ahead and just extend the contract then, because we've done some due diligence. So, the, you know, um, and, and of course, the city manager also, as well as Commissioner Cyple, spoke to some of the content of what a bid should look like, that it goes out next time. You know, however that looks, I, I, I trust staff is going to, you know, do their very best to, um, you know, have something that's cost-effective for the city. Um, so, I do want to say, there is one glaring issue in this whole situation for me, and that is that, you know, at both times it was spoken, there was a, um, you know, the cost is too much. We did an, an analysis, and the cost was too much. I don't, I don't know, uh, what, what that means. The reason why I say that is because when you look at the, what we are paying for, and Commissioner Cyple said it actually several times, we're, we're essentially paying for everything. In the original contract, Exhibit Bs, the compensation, I think there's about fifteen, uh, items that specify what we're paying for, and if you read through all of them, it's, it's everything. Um, and then there's a few other extra things about office space and things of that nature. I, I, um, I also see in the backup that, uh, Commissioner Schwartz, at the time, back, uh, back around, uh, what was this, this item was in seventeen? You know, wait, um, there was, uh, there was an audit, and the audit, uh, came back saying, um, give me just a moment here. So, the, the, the auditor did finish their audit, uh, there is a reference. The only thing that's missing, actually, in this item, by the way, in the backup, was, I didn't have a copy. A copy of the audit was not attached to this. It did reference, though, that the, um, the, it was, the audit was done, and is in compliance with applicable regulations, law, and procurement policies. But my issue is not so much an audit that's, says that they're in compliance and things. My question is, what does it really cost the city to perform this service the way that we're currently doing it today? And then, how do you compare that to, you know, a response, a bid response?
Well, that's the answer, Mr. Mayor.
So, so, the question, I, I'm not looking, I'm not looking for an answer at this point. What I, where I'm trying to get to... Excuse me?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I, I thought that was a question.
Commissioner Good, go ahead.
No, I'm, I didn't, that's not a question. I, uh, rhetorical. My, my, my bigger concern here is that, again, like I say, I, 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 I'm, you know, if the motion is made, I will certainly support a, you know, go out to bid. But I also would, would hope that that motion would incorporate some, some audit of the last five years, of what did it really cost the city? In accordance with the compensation section of the contract, which is Exhibit B, what did it really cost the city to perform this service? So, it's not just paying the contractor, it's also paying for everything else. So, why don't we just get a, a number brought before us by an audit? Because I, I'm looking at this, I'm like, eh, you know, I understand a lot of this stuff, but I, I don't know that I could do it. I think this is a professional service that needs...
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, um, City Manager?
No, City Manager.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, our financial statements, Commissioner, actually detailed every, every dollar that is spent on this. And when we did the analysis of in-house versus what we currently pay, that was matched about what we pay, and as Commissioner Cyple said, we pay for the oil, the filters, the gasoline, the vehicles, all the expenses, all the payroll, everything associated with it. So, those numbers are available, and we certainly could ask our, uh, commission audit to look at that for the last five years. But I'm certain, and Lisa Chung is here, would tell you, what's listed in our financial statements are the actual costs for the operation of both the school bus service, the community bus service, and the senior transportation program. So, the numbers are there. I apologize if it's not clear in our backup, but we certainly can provide that to you, and we're certainly open for our, our, uh, commission auditor to look at that as well. Uh, so, whatever the commission decides this evening to do, we will proceed with it, but we want, we need the time to do it, since the contract is up June.
Okay, further discussion?
I have to start now.
Mayor, point of clarification?
Point of clarification?
Yes, sir.
Need six bucks?
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, it's been stated a couple of times that when we, when we talked about, uh, four years ago, in two thousand and eighteen, I think is when we talked about this, that, that it was going to cost an additional three-point-one million dollars. I want to make sure, folks, that we are comparing apples and apples. What you were saying was our original, was the contract itself is about three-point-six million dollars a year. That additional three-point-one million dollars a year, this is where the apples and apples comes in, was not using our equipment, it was having that vendor bring in his own equipment to do that. So, when you say that the cost would go up three-point-one million dollars a year, that's not completely true and accurate, because you're not comparing apples and apples.
Mr. Mayor? If I, if I may?
Mr. Dodge?
There's, there's two issues here.
Right.
The one they referred to four years ago, it wasn't apples to apples. But what we presented to you this evening is apples to apples. We took what our costs are, and then we took, and the only change in that is we converted those contract employees to city employees with city benefits, with everything added on, and that's what brought, and insurance, and risk management and everything, that's what brought that cost up by another three-point-one million. Uh, Mark, am I reflecting that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay.
And Mayor, if I could, I just want to finish up with City Manager. I understand exactly, because you've had the discussion, I understand exactly what you're saying. But that's not anything, that's, that's not anything that I've asked for tonight or presented here tonight. Mine was, the contract would stay as the contract.
I understand.
It's just the vendor who is, eh, who is doing it. Therefore, if that's the, if that is the case, the only thing that would change, or should change, would be what actually, the salary of the vendor.
That's correct.
And that's, that's, that's the only thing that I'm...
That's, that's the only thing that I'm talking about doing. And I appreciate what you gave us, which was if we did in-house. We know that, that sometimes, as much as we wanna have everybody be employees, we can't, that's my point, is that...
We, we understand the position, if that's your desire.
Further discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
So, Mr. Dodge, I'm sensing that there's potentially, uh, a desire to go back out to bid. And frankly, when, when, when it comes to going...
Not from all of us.
I'm sorry.
Not from all of us?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, however, however, um, I wanna, I wanna know, so this is part of why procurement isn't just a, uh, a science, it's also an art. And it's a, it, a lot goes into it in terms of timing and everything else. Sometimes the bargain that you think you're gonna get, um, isn't the bargain that you're gonna get. Uh, so I wanna know, based on market conditions, based on the logistics, based on, and then, and then you're stuck with a bid. So, um, based on the market conditions, based on the logistics, are you recommending that we go out to bid?
Mr. Dodge?
Our recommendation was for renewal.
Okay, thanks.
All right, further discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Commissioner Good?
Are you?
Commissioner Good?
All right, uh, I just wanna say that again, um, you know, even Commissioner Castillo, I, I understand. Um, for me, it just, uh, you know, I feel better if we, uh, we do test the market. We don't have to execute on a bid. That's exactly why we're in the situation today, because they did go out to bid twice, you know, it didn't work out, and so we, we, we did this. And so, you know, five years later, you know, maybe there are some things different, changing the, the, the terms of it, or, or, you know, the content of the contract may change some things. I, um, I still just wanna ask, I mean, you know, I hear twenty-one years of, of this vendor being, you know, here, has that vendor ever been audited by the city?
City Manager?
Other than for, you know, for cost, not for, you know, are they doing what, in compliance with the federal regulations or something like that?
City Manager?
Um, Commissioner, I'm not sure what you mean by the federal regulations. Do you mean...
Okay, so let me just ask the simple question. Have they ever been audited for cost to the city?
Well, they're audited on a monthly basis by a staff member who reviews payroll, reviews all the expenditures. They provide, if they put an alternator in, in the, in, in a bus, uh, that person has actually gone and compared the serial numbers on that alternator with the, uh, invoice. Uh, that's done on a regular basis. Now, as far as auditing, uh, I'm not sure if the, other than the, the one audit we referred to by the commissioner auditor on transportation, I don't know if anything else has been done, but our city auditor, to what level, uh, they look at these contracts, I don't really have that detail as, uh, how much they dig into it. But, uh, I, I would say if they're gonna audit, then not audit the auditing the company, they're really auditing us and our internal, um, uh, our internal finances as to how, we don't pay anything unless we know that, or reimburse them unless we know we have those invoices and they paid the fifty employees, they showed us what the, the salaries were, that they paid their, their FICA, and they paid their taxes, and that they provided proof of insurance and risk. All of that information is done on a regular basis by a staff.
And, and, and I, I appreciate that. And I'm certain staff is doing a very diligent job of managing the contract. And that's what I would consider that answer to be, is managing the contract. What I'm concerned about, has it ever been audited for those items that are listed in Exhibit B compensation, what we paid them, and...
Yes, Commissioner, that's, I mean, I, I'm having difficulty with what you mean by an audit by an outside firm, an audit by...
By our city auditor.
By our city auditor? I'd have to check. I, I don't recall. Do you know, Mark?
It, it was.
I, I know the city auditor audited it, uh, at that time when it was requested. They went through financials and other information as well.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Here we are, Mayor. And, and back in twenty sixteen, seventeen, our commission auditor specifically did an audit on the, um, on, on the bus program, community bus, senior bus, charter bus. Um, it, it predates you just by a, a few months, Commissioner Good. The thing is, um, it's, it's, I, I love hearing the, the dialogue. Um, it, it's, it's, it's interesting how memories may fade, but ink always dries. There is a record of this entire process.
Mm-hmm.
And it's undebatable. Um, nuances and, and wordsmithing to make things look different than what they are, this isn't the reality that I'm prepared to swallow tonight. The fact is, um, this is a management contract, because we're taking this on the chin, like all of it. This is a management contract. I have full confidence in City Manager Dodge and Mr. Gomes and City Attorney to dust off the RFP that we did and put it back out on the street no later than the second meeting of December. And the reason being is because it's already been done, it's been vetted. This commission, at least four out of five of us, went through, and if you recall, we had three separate bids. And when we put it out on the street, we allowed three separate items.
Kind of repetitive.
Well...
Well, in thirty-five minutes, we, you don't like that, you put it...
It's three point six million dollars, Mayor.
Let, let, let me, let me tell you something.
And, and I will make a motion, I will make a motion.
Vice Mayor, we've been discussing this item.
Mm-hmm.
You've been having a third time discussing. If you like the item, you vote for it. If you don't, you don't. Very simple. We'll keep talking about it all night. You either make a decision or you don't.
I, I know, and this is what happens when, when you, and, and respectfully, Mayor, this is like, this is, this is what, this is what, this is what happens when we disagree.
Sorry, disagree.
When, when, when we don't agree, my time clock gets shut down.
City Attorney?
So, I'd like to move...
Shh, City Attorney, am I correct?
Mayor, you have the gavel and you control the debate, however.
Vice Mayor, please finish up.
So, I'd like to move to direct the city, um, manager.
There's a motion on the floor.
A substitute motion. My substitute motion is direct the city manager to work with the city attorney and procurement director to bring back the exact RFP language that was presented to us four years ago for us to review and decide if we're going to go out to bid at the second meeting of December.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dodge, you're shaking your head.
Yes, uh, there, there's been a lot of discussion this evening. I would not recommend that because that was the problem we had before. My recommendation would be the conversation Commissioner Cyple had, and taking what we do currently today and putting that out for bid. That way you will have an apples-to-apples comparison of what we currently do, giving another vendor an opportunity to bid on exactly the same process we do. The old RFP, as someone said, probably wasn't the best RFP we had, because it required a company to acquire millions of dollars worth of equipment, which they would have to amortize, which they would, after so many years, have to replace, plus a profit on it and probably financing on it. And that's probably what made that contract so costly. So if you're making that motion, if you get a second, great, but I don't think we will achieve anything.
Let me do that. I'm, I'm going to restate my substitute. Uh, it's to move what City Manager just said, and to bring it back in the second meeting of December.
Oh, second.
And as a second, uh, to that motion, uh, discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Castillo.
So...
On the substitute motion?
Yes, thank you very much. So, Mr. Dodge, there'll be enough time for us to, um, do this RFP, select a new vendor potentially, and, um, enter into a new contract without any continuity of service problems, assuming that we go with someone new?
Well, first, I'm gonna have to refer to Mr. Gomes, he has to do all the work. We, we know what it is. I don't know if we can get it back for the second meeting of December, but we certainly can get it back in January. And if we get it back in January, present it to you, then we would put it out on the street. We would need to at least give someone thirty days. So that's putting you to February, maybe, maybe March, and then you bring it back here for an award in April. Then if it's a new vendor, they have three months to plan, and we don't operate at least the school bus system in, in, for s- school schedules in the summer. But we do have the community bus system, and we do have the daily senior center buses. So, uh, it would be tight, but as you said, if it couldn't get accomplished, we could always extend the current contract for three months or six months if we choose a new vendor.
Mayor, may I ask the city manager a quick question?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your indulgence. This is, uh, um, first off, it's a lot of money. We're talking about over three million dollars.
Are you speaking on the substitute?
I, I am. My, the fact that it is such a, um, has so much money attached to it, and has so much, um, need as to the, the services that are provided and timelines. Mr. Dodge, could, could you not, I mean, do you think it's possible that you could get it back? I mean, you're not having to recreate some RFP stuff to get it back to us. I'm just concerned that if we do go forward, that we're putting a real time crunch, and that, that would be my only...
Commissioner, we'll, we'll, we'll do our best to get it back to you as quickly as we can, and we'll work as diligently as we can. However, sometimes when we get in discussions here, and RFPs are reviewed, there's a lot of rebuttal of certain things people wanna look at, and it could delay it. So we'll do our best to formulate this based on my understanding of what was said here collectively, and we'll bring it back to you as quickly as possible.
Mr. Mayor?
Who's that?
City Attorney. Just briefly for the record, your only meeting in December is the fourteenth, just FYI.
Okay. City Clerk, color roll, please. Substitute...
On the substitute motion, Mayor.
I heard.
Who seconded it?
There was a second by...
Commissioner Cyple.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes, for December fourteenth.
What was that?
December fourteenth, that's the only meeting. The motion was for the second meeting, this only one, December fourteenth.
Yes or no?
Yes, for December fourteenth.
Okay.
All right. Point of order, Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what the motion is or what that vote was about. I heard, I heard the ma...
The motion is a substitute motion for a time certain bringing it back to us.
And when is the time certain?
December fourteenth.
December fourteenth?
And I, and I heard the manager say he couldn't make December fourteenth. So...
What I said was, that would be very difficult, but I said we would bring it back to you as quickly as we can. If we can't meet, if we can't make it December fourteenth, then it would be the next meeting in January.
And, and that was the motion?
Yes.
If, if that was the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Colin, keep going.
The Vice Mayor made the substitute motion, he needs to clarify.
He did?
Yes, uh, I did, thank you, Mayor.
City Clerk?
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
No.
Motion passes.
All right. We are now on item eleven, City Commissioner Cyple.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, motion to approve the me- meeting minutes of the Wednesday, November second, twenty twenty-two, commission meeting. And I just have a, um, some clarification. If we could please go to page, let me find it, page three, items at the request of the public, um, if you go down, one, two, three, the fourth little paragraph starts out, City Manager Dodge addressed the residents. And it only, uh, stated that there would be a meeting to address problems at Durango Estates, and it should include and the trails, because it was the meeting was for both, both communities. Not only in that paragraph, but then in the very last sentence that starts with Commissioner Cyple concluded with addressing the residents of Durango Estates, and that also should, should include and the trails, cause it was both communities.
All right.
Okay, that was it.
All right. Then, uh, do we need a, a vote on that?
You do, Mr. Mayor. Been pulled off the agenda, yes. Thank you.
Need a second. Second, second, by the way, Vice Mayor, go ahead. City Clerk, color roll.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes, please.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yeah.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes. Thank you, we're on item twelve, City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Item twelve for the record is a motion to pass proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash twelve on second and final reading, is a public hearing attached to it as well. Proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-two twelve is an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter thirty-two of the city's code of ordinances entitled Departments, Boards, and Commissions, providing by, providing for the creation of the youth advisory board by specifically creating a new section thirty-two point one ninety-six and thirty-two point one ninety-seven, providing the city of Pembroke Pines severability, providing for conflict severability, copification, and for an effective date. Public hearing, the items on the floor for consideration. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, number twelve. Thank you.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Who's that?
Cyple.
Who's that?
So moved.
Second motion, is there a second? Second, second by Vice Mayor. Discussion, Commissioner Cyple?
Yes, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to say first to my colleagues that I apologize for not having this information ready for our previous commission agenda, but I had not completed all of my outreach. It was important to me to hear what our school principals, our community members, and our young folks thought about, about forming a youth advisory board. I spoke with principals, students, parent advisory boards, and with residents at HOA meetings. There was definite interest and positive feedback from all. Some of the comments that were made were that it was a great idea, that it was an awesome opportunity for our students to grow and learn, that it empowers our youth to take interest in their communities. Based on all this positive feedback, as well as the many examples I shared with you of other cities' successful participation in their own youth boards, I again ask for support from my colleagues to move forward with this initiative.
I have further discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyple? Uh, Commissioner Castillo?
Thank you very much. I wanna thank the city attorney and the, uh, uh, and the commission for including in the application, uh, a reference to sunshine law, which will apply to these young people, uh, who are selected to serve. I think it's important that the parents are aware of, uh, of those, uh, issues, and that the young people who are gonna serve on the commission get the necessary training. And I'm very satisfied that, uh, that that concern, uh, has been addressed. Thanks.
Mayor, I have one more point of clarification. Yes, uh, City Attorney?
Yes, Madam.
As with all of our, um, all of our city boards, um, that are actually city boards, uh, you, you or your staff, some of your, of, of our attorneys, attend meetings. Could you kind of explain what happens there?
If I may speak, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. For each boarding committee that's been established by the city commission, it is a periodic event for us, particularly, for example, the charter school system, advisory boards, and others that are required by state law and others. We, we from our office, the city attorney's office, present a, a full presentation on sunshine, public records, and ethics, uh, to each board, um, with a PowerPoint, uh, with handouts, with items and matters that relate to the responsibilities and the obligations of membership, um, and, and the conditions of that membership and what it means. And if I may quickly offer, the application which is referred to by Commissioner Castillo does make reference to the penalty provisions of two eighty-six, the state statute governing sunshine, part of which would be a, a presentation we would make to the board once it's established.
And so, so this board would be treated just as any other board we have in the city with that particular portion of what you provide?
Mayor, respond, Mayor. Yes, it would either be me, one of my law partners, or one of the assistant city attorneys. We would present, uh, accordingly, in a, on a periodic basis with new membership, correct?
Great, thank you.
Yes, Madam.
And just one question for Mr. Dodge. I know the original, um, uh, document starts stated that we would start this at the beginning of the school year, but since we're already into it, um, I know you and I had a little conversation, and you thought perhaps we could even try to get it started for the remainder of this school year. Is that still a possibility?
I, I'm sure by the beginning of the next, um, semester in January, we could, uh, begin that process.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you for your hard work. Commissioner Cyple, it's important. I am honored to support you willingly. It's a long time in coming.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Public hearing, anybody like to speak on the side? Anyone opposed to public hearing? City Clerk, color roll.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mayor and Commissioner, the permanent number for the record is two thousand. That's the actual number, two thousand.
Thank you, colleagues, for support, I appreciate it.
Good program.
I am thirty.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, for first reading. It's a motion to pass... Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, for first reading. It's a motion of pass proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash sixteen on first reading. It is an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter thirty-two of the city's code of ordinance entitled Departments, Boards, and Commissions at section thirty-two point one sixty-one, entitled Composition, Appointment of Members, Terms of Office, Providing Updates to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee Member Renewal and Term Renewal, Providing for Codification, Providing for Conflict Severability, and Finally Providing for an Effective Date, First Reading on Item Number Thirteen for the record. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, on the floor.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Cyphal, second?
Second.
Second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
By Commissioner Good? Discussion. Hearing now, color roll.
Commissioner Cyphal?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
For the record, Mayor and Commissioner, that item will be heard in these chambers for second and final public hearing on December the fourteenth. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
All right, Mayor?
No items, Mayor.
City Attorney?
Just one item, Mayor and Commissioner, just to remind the Mayor and Commissioner that on, uh, the twenty-eighth of November, the City of Pembroke Pines versus Hollywood case returns to trial before Judge Frank in the courthouse. It's a public, public meeting. It's available for public inspection. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, for that.
All right. Hearing, all the, our meeting is adjourned. Thanks, you all.
Mayor, before we adjourn the meeting, we should make sure we tell everybody to have a really happy Thanksgiving.
Did you want to make a motion?
No, I just want to say it. Um, everybody have a really happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Please spend it with all your friends and your loved ones, and have a great time. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yep?